And they're older. Pretty sure if I asked them to color eggs, they'd look at me a little.
Yeah, honey.
Mm-hmm.
Ready?
Yes.
Yep. Good. Good evening, everyone. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Roll call, Lori.
Amanda Allen.
Here.
Here.
Linda Baker.
Here.
Nicole Grover. Ross Daniels.
Here.
Erin Noah.
Here.
Here.
Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there comments or questions on the agenda for tonight? There being none, I need a motion to approve.
I'm a sport.
Roll call.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Grover. Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Yes.
Melissa Hett.
Yes.
Agenda is approved. First call for public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? Okay. Moving on to our discussions and presentations. Winter sports recognition, Carrie Balk is going to come up and call coaches up to talk about our winter athletes.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Stouffer gave me the option to be here to present these awards or do the scoreboard at soccer. So I'm here to present your awards. We obviously had a tremendous winter sports season, so we will be recognizing tonight girls bowling, boys bowling, and wrestling. We're going to have the coaches come up. If you guys could give an overview of your season for us, and then we will hand out awards to each of your athletes that are with us tonight. So we're going to start with bowling with Coach Mooney and Coach Pike. Or just Coach Mooney. Because Coach Pike, he's like, oh, I didn't know I had to do this.
He's going to make you talk anyway.
I was going to say.
Hi. As Principal Balk said, I am Mark Mooney. I am the new bowling head coach. Sorry, this might sound a little scripted when I talk. I'm not particularly good at this part. First, I'm going to introduce my assistant coach and my active boys coach, Phil Pike. He's going to introduce our boys team and go over how they did.
Okay, so overall, fantastic season. Started out a little slow. It was, you know, we dropped one to Edwardsburg pretty early in the season, but we rallied, got all the way back to where we could have won conference. Didn't quite get it done, but it made them hungrier. So these boys went into regionals and stormed regionals and won it for the first time in the history of the program. Went on to state. We made the cut at state, so we got to bowl for the opportunity to try and win a state championship. Made it to the semifinals there. Unfortunately, we met up with a juggernaut named Flint Kearsley, who knocked us out and won their third in a row. So unfortunately, that's where it went. We also had two individuals that qualified for state in Ashton Lehman and Luke and Hersher. But the boys that I have here tonight are Lennox Cunningham, Nicholas Allen, Theo Herman, and Ashton Lehman. Oh, and JT Wilds, I'm sorry. He snuck in a little later, I forgot. And then we're missing Harper James and Luke and Hersher.
Come on up.
Come on up.
I gotta stand up here, you gotta stand up.
They're going to have them come stand up here and get their picture?
Usually.
Over there, don't they?
You guys want to line up right in front of here? You want to just...
Get all the pictures of them you want.
Do you want the certificates for the other...
Yeah, you can leave them in here, I'll make sure that...
I would also like to thank Superintendent Nash and Ms. Balk for coming and watching some of the finals. Yeah, we've seen you guys.
One, two, three.
Get that over here. Three, one, two, and three.
Before I give it back over to Coach Mooney, some people in here know, but he was also given an award for being the D2 Coach of the Year this year for girls, so.
Thank you. The ladies had just a nasty extension of last season. I mean, it's just as good as last season, if not better. Right off the bat, they had an undefeated regular season in the Wolverine Conference. They took it into the conference finals where they won that and became the three-peat Wolverine Conference Champions on the girl side. They went from there into the regionals where they basically took that by storm. Like Coach Phil said, they won by over 300 pins and became the three-time regional champions over two divisions. We jumped into D2 this year due to enrollment. After regionals, that qualified them for state, they moved on. They went into state and actually qualified sixth during qualifying, which brought them into match play. We unfortunately got taken out also by Flint Kearsley in the first round. But that qualifying for match play earned them Team All-State honors. Individually, I had six of my seven varsity girls qualify for all-conference. Two honorable mention in Lily Kerr and Steffi Alexander. I had four qualify for all-conference first team. And let's see, Lexi Page was seventh, Laney Roll Pike, I believe, was fifth. Jana came in at second with the medalist as Taylor Mooney, taking first in all-conference. Individually, they went into regionals where I had three girls qualify for state at regionals. Lily Kerr was kind of like my shining dark horse. She slid in just under the wire on me. And then Taylor Mooney qualified at third, and Jana Larson actually won her regional as a regional champion. They went on to state where Lily, she did admirably, but didn't quite get it done to make it through match play. Jana qualified in the top eight team, which earned her All-State honors. Taylor qualified second, which actually led her into match play where she won in her first round of match play, which overall has her as a fourth-place finish, and actually earned her first-team All-State honors. And then we cap it off with Taylor being named to the MSHIBCA for the year 2025, to the Dream Team, which is the top-six bowlers in the entire state across all divisions. With me tonight, I believe I have Taylor Mooney, Laney Roll Pike, and Lily Kerr. I don't see anybody else. Missing tonight, due to all their dual-sport athletes, is Jana Larson and Lexi Page. They are playing tennis tonight. Steffi Alexander couldn't be here, she lives a little too far away to get here tonight, and Kaylee Ellis, who works every Monday. Ladies. Right at front there. Yes, thank you.
One, two, three.
And then over here. Three, one, two, and three.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Okay, thank you. And next up, we have Coach Smith with wrestling.
Appreciate the board inviting us and recognizing their success. Appreciate these guys being here. We've got multi-sport athletes. I've got a dozen guys at Grand Rapids Wrestling right now at a club up there. This is the second year in a row we won our conference. Eight conference champions, 13 of my 14 guys placed in the conference. Our conference, you don't vote, like football or whatever, you guys don't have, we don't have a meeting. You just win your bracket, your first-team all-conference. I had eight of those. And then 13 guys had medaled. Further than our school's ever gone with a wrestling program as far as making it to the semifinals at the state tournament. Kind of got a bad seed, but that's the way it works. You've got to wrestle them anyway. We'll change our schedule and go forward this year. We all scored our competition this year in our duels. We had 30 duels. We scored 1,688 points. We only had 346 points scored on us, so. And those are some of the best teams in the state. We, our school has the first women's conference wrestling state champ, or conference champion this year, Frida. She's not here. She's a senior, she's a two-year wrestler. And I could go through, I've known these kids since they were six, eight years old, been their coach their whole life. Usually I stand up here and talk about them all. I'm going to give them an opportunity so that you can put a voice with the face and understand some of the stats or the lifetime of hard work that they've been putting into to have success in a wrestling program.
My name is Evan Harper. I'm a sophomore, 157. I went 77 for, 73 and 22, 41 pins, conference champ, and two-year varsity.
Sam Reynolds, I'm a heavyweight, I'm a senior. Ended two-time all-conference and ended with 64 pins.
I'm Louis Smith, I'm a junior. Wrestled 125 last year. I finished my third year on varsity, 149 and 12, with 122 pins.
Jack Monroe, wrestled 126, I'm a junior, I'm a two-time conference champ, state qualifier, won 127 and 28, with 82 pins. And I was academic all-state.
My name's Stan Bedcock, wrestled 132. I'm a sophomore, second-year varsity, state qualifier, conference champ, won 58 and 20, with 37 pins, and I went mid-academic all-state.
My name is Jackson Smith, wrestled 215. I'm a two-time conference champ, two-time state qualifier, and I placed seventh this year, and I was also academic all-state.
Quick note, Jackson and Louis will be representing the state of Michigan this year on some Disney duels. We travel all over, so just because high school's not over, they've been selected to wrestle for the state of Michigan, so. Thanks, Carrie.
All right, ready? One, two, and three.
Hey, guys, over here. You're not going to... One, two, three.
Whatever she wants to do.
Here.
Want to give them the certificates?
I can.
I gave them to your boys out here.
Oh, you did?
These are the ones that aren't here.
Oh, these are the ones that aren't here? I'll give them to them.
Yeah, okay. Thanks to all the athletes and parents that showed up tonight to give us the opportunity to honor your guys and girls. It's always one of our favorite things to do during our meetings. I say this every spring and fall, you give me a little heart attack when I pull in and see all the cars in the parking lot. And then I remember, okay, it's just student recognition, which is one of the best things as a board that we get to do. So coaches, parents, student athletes, thank you guys for representing the Rivers in the best way possible, which is academically and sports-wise. We really appreciate everything that you guys put into the seasons, so. Anything else? Okay. You guys don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want, so if you want to. I mean, it's interesting stuff, but...
Oh, yeah.
Tonight is, right? Quite the agenda.
Has anyone ever stayed, or is it just a mass exodus?
It's a mass exodus.
Okay, fair enough.
It's good stuff.
They did their part.
Yes.
Look at my grandsons in the seventh grade, Roman. On most every single wrestling match. I mean, his, they last 15.
All right. Up next, our athletic site work bid recommendation, Chris Minkowski from Plant Moran.
Good evening, keeping with the sports trend. We just recently bid out our first Series III project, which is some improvements at the baseball field, softball field, and additional work at Armstrong Stadium. Starting with Armstrong Stadium, we're adding some paving in the southwest corner near the fieldhouse and doing some work on those gates that sit out there as well. We have a sidewalk going in to extend out towards the visitors' seating area for accessibility, and then concrete placement around the existing concessions building. Baseball bullpen and infield improvements. Backstop, we're going to replace backstop netting, and then batting cage installation. Softball is similar in scope with infield improvements, the backstop netting dugout improvements, and then batting cage and bullpen install. Our bidding went March 27th through April 15th. We posted this on a lot of sites, as well as Sigma, the state website, to post potential projects for contractors to be aware of. We reached out to multiple contractors. Participation wasn't the greatest, partially due to the timing of the bid, but we did get bids back that were in line with what we expected. Some of these projects went out with Armstrong Stadium in the first Series II as an alternate. We couldn't accept those at that time due to project budget, so now we're pulling those back in. So the recommendation, these are bid as GC projects. So Fulton has the site work for the entire site work package. So their proposed award is $537,500. Russy Brady bid the general trades package, and they were the lowest qualified bid at $492,370. And then we're requesting a 7% contingency for total construction cost of $1,100,961. Any questions?
Any questions for Chris? I don't have any. All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, out-of-state field trip request for Happin Elementary, Dave Soder request.
Our third-grade class is requesting to attend an out-of-state field trip. They'll be heading to South Bend to a baseball game. It is a field trip that we've taken the last couple of years. The students participate in a program with the South Bend Cubs. There's a reading incentive program that they do. It's an educational day that they do at the ballpark, so they're bringing a bunch of different schools down, and we're looking to attend this year. Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Dave. April budget update, Mandy?
That's the most important.
It's in our...
Yeah, I have it on my computer.
If we can see it, I'm just saying no, really.
Yeah.
I'm fine.
Do you want me to...
We've got it on our Chromebooks, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Everything's going really good so far. We're spending a lot of time working on next year's budget already. If you can believe it or not, you'll notice a couple of changes I just want to point out in the revenue section. We are 98% on our local sources. That is the tax revenue that we get from local townships, and that is a really good number. We'll get a little bit more in that area after we get the delinquent taxes, and that check should be coming anytime between now and June 30th. One other thing, you'll notice that the federal sources, that number is going up. You'll see another draw on the next month when we meet, and then you'll see another one on the following month when we meet as well. So those monies are coming in also. And I just got a report from our auditor for title funds, and he reported that everything looks great for the first draw of the fiscal year. So that's excellent news. I actually was just checking that when you called my name. So expenditures, everything's doing really good. We're hoping that all district staff are doing all non-emergency expenditures are going to be completed by May 1st so that we can get things wrapped up nice and early and have some really good, solid numbers going into the summer and auditing season. So everything's going great so far. Any questions or concerns?
Guys are doing a great job on staying on top of everything. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and then our district drinking water quality report, Brian Leonard.
How you doing tonight? Okay, so just a quick update to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what's been going on with our water testing and everything else. So as you guys have heard me talk about, over the last couple of months, the district was actively involved in the Fill-to-First efforts, which is part of the enhancement of our drinking water systems and drinking supply systems for our kids and staff within the buildings. There are certain criteria and regulations that were required to meet in relation to that effort, and we're right on track with all that. We were able to also take advantage of some grant funds that we'll be leveraging as far as actually replacing some of our bottle fill stations and units like that within the schools to bring everything up to brand-new units and spec. So that's kind of the first phase. The district also chose to participate in a volunteer program, and that's what these results are from. So there's two different things going on simultaneously, both interplay and work together. The second program is actually what they call the Lead Testing in Schools and Childcare Facilities Grant Program. And this is a federally funded program that's funded back down through the state that we chose to participate in. It allowed for us to actually do additional testing for lead in our water supply service areas throughout the district that were identified as consumable areas. So we shut the district down on the first Friday of spring break. We actually secured all the facilities for the standing period, number of hours that you have to keep the buildings not in use. Then we had testers come in that were funded, actually through the state, hired by the state, came in and actually went around with us, and we completed two draw samples from each of the identified units in every one of the school buildings. Those samples were then sent off to the state lab. Those lab results are posted on our website as well as the Eagle site, so you can access that information both publicly on the Eagle State site as well as on our district website and see the results of those testing. What I've provided for the board tonight was just a basic summary that we put together, pulled all the information in. And as you can see, majority of our school systems and testing areas that we did came back really well. We've reviewed these with the principals, and they have access to all this information, too. There were a couple spots that came up what I call hot, which means they had a greater recorded amount in their readings than is what is allowed. So just to give you a frame of context, the law used to be 15 parts per billion, okay? It then changed in the state of Michigan to 12 parts per billion. And under the new practices that are now being employed for schools, it's five parts per billion. So that's a considerable lessened amount as far as the requirements. And it's, of course, because our younger people, our students, are greatly affected by things like lead in the water and stuff like that. So that's why it's such a stringent account. That being said, I'm not going to read through actually all these, but you can see from the information I gave you, it's classified by building. So, you know, at the high school, we had a couple of units that were identified that had above five parts per billion in the actual test. Middle school had two or three units that were, areas that were. Park Elementary didn't have any that was detected in their results at all their different consumable water station areas. Norton Elementary had one kitchen faucet that did test hot, if you will. It was one billionth of a point above the limit in the kitchen area on the first draw, but not on the second draw. Andrews, same thing. We had one that came in at one billion, one point, one billionth point above the required amount. A lot of zeros in these numbers. Ruth Happin, same deal, but on the second draw it dropped. And then Barrows Elementary, of course, we did expect to have some higher readings at Barrows, which was accurate. What we did do in relation to receiving the results, once we received them, we put a corrective action plan in place. We shut down any of the units as required by the state for operation and use. Signage was posted, water was turned off, units were bagged, if they could be bagged also. Any of the other drinking areas or food areas, food preparation areas where flushing is required as per regulated by the state, we implemented signage and stuff for that. These, this is what we kind of expected. We did expect that we were going to have some that were going to pop, predominantly because the water sits sometimes in the piping for longer than normal. It's not a heavily-used unit. We have a good example, this is in one of the kitchens at the high school. We have multiple fill stations that are all in a single line, and they don't, by practice, utilize all those. So even though we let them sit for a specified period, they had been sitting before. Because you don't do a pre-flush, you base things on, you know, actual operation. That way you get the most accurate results coming back from the testing. So that being the case, you know, I've met with George with food service, we've talked about it, how we're going to address these things moving forward, what type of filtration systems we're going to put in to address that. And then we will move forward accordingly with the next efforts that we're doing with both the drinking, filling station replacements, as well as in our other consumable areas. So this test will be done again next year, so we'll do this on an annual basis. What you will see between here and next year is some changes in the number of fixtures. We will be reducing some fixtures from the list. We'll be taking them out of service or consumable service because they're being deemed as not necessary for operation. So again, it's not reasonable to filter it for no particular reason, so. Any questions?
Are you just going to leave them sitting covered for now, or, I mean, what ends up happening?
Well, a number of them were able to move to what we call a flushing protocol. So if you turn them on and you flush them for a period of time before use, they're fine to be used.
And then you open them back up?
Yeah, so they're totally, they're totally fine. The ones that have been discontinued, predominantly those were the drinking fountains, which are, you know, of course, specifically for the purpose of drinking and nothing else. There's no potential to use it for hand washing or any other purposes. Those have been taken completely out of service.
Okay.
They were all in the units. I mean, to be honest, we anticipated they were probably going to be a problem, if there was going to be a problem in any of the schools.
So you're just going to end up removing them then?
We'll be replacing those completely, yeah. And they're all slated for replacement already. We've already identified what units we're putting in. I've already had it validated by the state of Michigan last week that the units I selected are appropriate and approved. So now the next step is just making, getting things lined up for the construction work and installation work, so. But they do currently have places to drink and everything in the school. We didn't shut down any schools entirely, so.
Thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, I think you had said earlier that some of the fixtures actually are the source of a positive test, is that?
Yeah, the reason, and that's the reason they do a double test, it's really kind of interesting. They do what's called a first draw, a flush test, and then they do a first draw, is actually how it's phrased. And that first one is to really kind of evaluate any of the water that's coming out of the line coming off of the main, as well as the fixture unit itself, as any residual that might be, you know, caught within that unit, depending on how the unit was constructed, the age, I mean, there's many, many factors that can contribute. The second draw, then, is to pull out of the actual line so that that way we get a sample of the water actually feeding where the spigot comes off, if you will.
With, so are we on the, is the school using city water?
Some of the schools do, and some are on well.
Does that have any, does the city water have effect on some of these results here?
I wouldn't say directly. Indirectly, there's many, many factors. So, yeah, it's kind of hard to say this caused that, with the exception of probably one unit. There's one unit where I feel pretty safe in assuming that, yeah, it's the unit, because it's that old.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Answers my questions, too.
Brian, we appreciate you and your team being proactive about this versus reactive, as many of the districts are not taking care of the problem until after the high levels are. are anticipated. So happy to hear you guys volunteered for this program for the health of the students.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yeah, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call.
Thanks, Brian. All right, up next is our second reading for the policy update. Were there any comments or questions or changes that anybody wanted to see to the policies?
I don't have any.
I will point out that the Three-Sick Time Act policies that were presented at first reading, they have been pulled out because we are already in compliance with those, and so the additional policies were not needed. So those three were pulled. Okay. No questions there. Moving on to our action items. Policy adoption. It is recommended that the board adopt the policies listed in item number seven as presented. Are there comments or questions? Motion to approve?
Move support.
Roll call.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cover.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes, motion passes six-zero. Bit approval for the athletic site work. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the recommendation of the responsive bids as presented. Are there comments or questions on the bids? Motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Roll call.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cover.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes, motion passes six-zero. Out-of-state field trip for Hoppin Elementary. It is recommended that the board approve the Hoppin third-grade class trip to Four Winds Stadium in South Bend, Indiana as presented. Comments or questions on the field trip? Motion to approve?
So move.
Roll call.
Nicole Cover.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes, motion passes six-zero. And the consent agenda, anything anyone want pulled out separate? Motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
So move.
Support.
Roll call.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cover.
Aaron Noah.
Yes, motion passes six-zero. And that is it for the action items. Up next, the board will be moving into closed session as permitted under Section 8B of the Open Meetings Act for student discipline. I have a motion to move into closed.
So move.
Support.
Roll call.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Cover.
Ross Daniel.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes, board is now in closed session.
Sounds good.
Do we go into her? I think we're going to stay here because I think the administrators are dismissed,
Sorry, I forgot about that. You just told me that too. The board is back in open session. In regards to student number six one six seven four, it is recommended that the student be expelled for one hundred and eighty school days with possible reinstatement that may be requested after one hundred and fifty school days, provided the conditions of the return are met. The conditions of the return will also be provided in writing. Are there comments or questions on the motion? Motion to approve?
Support.
Roll call.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Covert. Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Melissa Pat.
Yes.
Erin Noack.
Yes, motion passes six zero. All right, board calendar. Ready for this? There's a lot of stuff going on. April twenty fourth is the opening reception for the Three Rivers Community Schools and Carnegie Center for the Arts Student Show. April twenty fourth to the fifteenth, that show will run at the Carnegie Center. April twenty eighth, staff professional development, no school for students. May first Rotary Honors Night, six P M. at the PAC. May fourth, Three Rivers High School Spring Band Concert, seven P M. at the PAC. May fifth will be our Board of Education Work Session. May sixth is the Three Rivers Middle School Spring Band Concert, seven P M. at the PAC. May eighth is the High School Choir Pops Concert at seven P M. at the PAC. May fourteenth is the Three Rivers High School Class of Twenty Twenty Five Senior Parade at six P M. Are members of the board interested in meeting up like we've done in the past or? So we've kind of like met at the corner of Hoffman and Main and just kind of stood there as a board. I'll be there again this year. Linda will be there probably with her dogs as is normal.
May fourteenth, correct?
May fourteenth, yep, six P M. They start from the high school and they just loop around in their cars.
Everybody waves, yeah.
Yep, started in COVID and we just kind of continued because it's kind of cool. May ninth, yeah. May nineteenth will be our Board of Education Regular Meeting. May twenty second, Three Rivers High School Graduation. We will get more information on where to be and what we need to do for that as we get a little closer. May twenty sixth Memorial Day, no school. May thirtieth, last day of school, which will be a half day. And May thirtieth is also the day for the Saint Joe County Adult Ed Graduation at the Sturgis Middle School. Miss anything for board calendar? All right, any board member comment?
I have an I S D. meeting on Wednesday.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, we'll report if there's anything earth shattering there. All right, on behalf of Superintendent Nash and myself, I would like to read a statement from the board regarding Norton Schools. Three Rivers Community School continues to face challenges with a concerning trend of declining enrollment mirroring a state and countrywide pattern. A steady drop in student numbers since the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, accumulating in a loss of approximately five hundred and thirty five students for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, represents a twenty percent decrease. This decrease has resulted in financial implications for the district with a loss of over five point one million dollars in state aid, nearly half a million dollars each year. The funding formula for Michigan schools is largely based on peer per pupil allocations, meaning fewer students directly correlate to reduce state funding. The loss of state aid continues to necessitate difficult decisions for the district, including potential budgetary constraints and staff reductions. Despite funding reductions over the past three years, Community Three Rivers Community Schools has maintained a balanced budget by absorbing positions in order to avoid layoffs. The impact is not isolated to Three Rivers Community Schools. Saint Joe County as a whole has witnessed a decline of one thousand two hundred and twenty eight students, or twelve percent during the same period. Statewide, Michigan public schools have experienced a loss of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and nineteen students, or seven percent. However, the Three Rivers Community Schools decline significantly outpaces both the county and state averages. While the district has experienced a gradual decrease since the two thousand seven, two thousand eight school year, a substantial portion of the loss, three hundred and eighty one of the five hundred and thirty five students, has occurred since the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Reasons for the decline are multifaceted and reflect broader demographic trends. Declining birth rates, increased competition from private, home and online schools, and families moving out of the area are all contributing factors. Three Rivers Community Schools continues to explore strategies to mitigate the impact of the enrollment decline and secure alternate funding sources. Unfortunately, the long term impact of this decline will have lasting effects on the community. Beginning with the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year, a restructure aimed at addressing the district's declining enrollment and ensuring long term financial responsibility will be implemented. The restructuring effective for the new school year will see changes in grade configurations across several elementary schools. Andrews Elementary, serving students in grades kindergarten through five, as well as early childhood special education. Hoppen Elementary, serving students in grades kindergarten through five and housing a self contained special education classroom. Park Elementary, serving students in kindergarten through fifth and housing a special self contained special education classroom. Norton Elementary, housing the Great Start Readiness Program, Young Fives and one self contained section of kindergarten through third grade. Three Rivers Community Schools is committed to working closely with families to ensure a smooth transition. The district will prioritize finding the best possible solutions for each student, taking into account building and classroom capacity. While we understand this is an unfortunate change, the restructuring is designed to optimize the use of existing facilities and staff, allowing the district to maintain essential programs and services despite the reduced funding. By consolidating grade levels, Three Rivers Community Schools aims to create a more effective learning environment and ensure that resources are allocated effectively. The district acknowledges the challenges posted posed by declining enrollment and the resulting financial pressures. However, we remain optimistic that this restructuring will position the district for long term sustainability and continued success. Sincerely, Nikki Nash and Erin Noack. Good? Want to answer questions? Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Roll call?
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Nicole Covert. Ross Daniels.
Yes.
Melissa Patch.
Yes.
Amanda Allen.
Yes.
Erin Noack.
Yes.